Senior, getting ready for college.
Okay, we'll give it one minute before we get started. I know, but the audience, they might be just getting that last bottle. I will call the meeting to order for the Foxborough School Committee. The agenda this evening starts with visitors, then approval of minutes, a policy review update, superintendent and assistant superintendent transition update, preliminary enrollment by grade in school, opening of school update, process for school improvement and district improvement plan updates, planning for school committee retreat. And just so everybody knows, this is not a retreat in Bermuda or Florida or anyplace really nice. It is here in Foxborough. No additional expense. Then we have an update on school security, moving on to other matters, and after that there'll be an adjournment. Actually, before we open up to visitors, I would like to welcome Dan back. Dan has been our student council representative for a little while now. He's going into his senior year, so it's a pleasure to have you back again this year.
I think it's your third year, isn't it?
Third or fourth.
Third or fourth.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's his fourth.
Third.
Third year.
This is his third full year.
He sat in the audience for quite a while, and then he, we moved him up.
Well, maybe he will, when he's old enough, he'll run for school committee and be one of the youngest school committee members in the state.
Possibly.
It's a lot of fun, Dan.
Not promising.
Okay, visitors, are there any, any visitors that have any comments? Ms. Nevada, would you please come to the, to the table? As, as you're coming up to the table, it has been brought to my attention that on the back of the agendas the school committee follows, there's a set of rules that we haven't been following relative to visitor input. And so, as Ms. Nevada was getting ready, a committee member has asked that we, we spend some time reviewing this and making sure, because it says that citizens who wish to address the committee submit anything in advance, and so that the committee has an idea of what's going to happen. If we want that to continue, a committee member would like us to review it, but in the meantime, Ms. Nevada, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Naredo of Swoon Street. Thank you for the opportunity to address the school committee this evening. At the last meeting, a final draft report of the educational quality and accountability, or EQA, audit was presented. We've logged the leadership's efforts to keep the public informed of external audit findings, and the leadership's efforts to take stock in those recommendations and to move forward with transparency of intent. As you may have noticed, we reviewed the text of the final draft report in detail and have written a response to the EQA, and this letter's available at our website for anyone who would like to read it. We were asked if we would like to make a presentation of our thoughts tonight regarding the letter. We appreciate the invitation, but feel that there would be too much distraction with soundbites about a draft that do not do justice to the complexity of the issues. Those with interest may read for themselves and take the time to reach a fuller understanding of our educational history. We do not want to risk presenting casually what is indeed a thorough examination of our schools and a conscious, conscientious effort on our part to try to understand this. Some may have neither the time nor the interest to read all the documents that exist, but we do encourage you to please take time to read those that are available to you, and to read them for yourselves and develop your own perspective. So, thank you very much, and I look forward to talking about it again in the future.
Thank you. Just to clarify for my fellow committee members, I had reached out to the Nevados after I'd read their nine-page response to the EQA, and I asked them if they intended to address that this evening, because if they did, I'd prefer them to request an agenda item, and that we have it as an agenda item and not to be used during the visitor time, because the topic couldn't be done in the three or four minutes we allow someone for that. And they chose not to take 15 minutes and discuss that, and so therefore, tonight's short statement, I guess. Correct?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? I see there's someone else.
I'm sorry. Yes, Andres Navedo, 94 spruce. Mr. Hankton mentioned that these conduct responsibilities of citizens at regular meetings, and it says that citizens may address the committee at regular meetings by submitting correspondence and written reports and other things. We have done that, and we have done that in the past, and a celebrated one is the letter of December 29th of last year, that took months to address. And we know that the opportunity is there, and we, we use it, we use it when we think it's appropriate, and we thank you for, for the invitation for tonight, but like we said, you know, the letter was addressed to the EQA, and those that are interested can look it up in the web. We'll see what the report says. Thank you very much.
I was not meaning to single out either of you two, but a committee member did ask that the committee take the time in the next week or two to look at this and make sure that this is where we want it to be. And since we've gone through the policy manual, we didn't specifically address that comment, I didn't think so, I thought it was appropriate to respond to that committee's, committee members' request by bringing it up publicly.
Larry, did you want to make that into an agenda item for next Monday's meeting, or how would you like to do that?
Well, I think Chris is going to suggest that instead of meeting next Monday as a school committee and to discuss typical items, that we use next, next meeting as the retreat to discuss goals and objectives. So, at that point, I would schedule, I would put it on for the next regularly scheduled meeting from that standpoint, if that's what ends up being a recommendation from Chris. As we, the next item on the agenda is the minutes of August 20th. I had a couple of comments I wanted to make, and then I'll open up for other corrections. In going through here, we talked about the use of the defibrillators, Paul, those have been purchased now, and we've done training for all of the, Chris, all the athletic folks that had the training.
Yeah, I can speak to the training piece, and I know Paul can speak to the purchase. We now have, just in hearing from our new athletic director Craig Najarian last week, last Wednesday evening, we trained 12 more of our coaches. So, we have all of our areas covered, and let me just give you an example. We have coaches at the varsity football level, at the junior varsity football level, at the freshman football level, who all have been trained, and, and all have gone through, either had gone through the training in the past, or went through the training on, on Wednesday evening. So, I actually was, I actually spoke to Sharon Kelly, who did the training, and thanked her for taking time out of her busy schedule to, to do that. So, we have coverage at each level in each one of our sports, soccer, cross-country, golf. Any that I'm missing?
Field hockey.
Field hockey.
Cheerleading.
Cheerleading. We have coverage at every level now, and I think that puts us in a very, very good place. So, we have the, obviously, the understanding of CPR, the understanding of how to use the defibrillators, and, and then, and the other piece of it that I think we'll do even more with, the next time we do this for our winter sports, is basic first aid, which is, which is really the area that, that is, that is more prevalent than anything else. Having said all that, I'll remind, and I know the coaches know this, but remind the committee that the first thing that, that takes place is, is calling 911, because we're not substituting our knowledge and our workshop training for that of a real expert. So, we want, we want to just make sure that we're able to give some intermediary work with kids, just in case of an emergency. But I'm very pleased that the coaches stepped up, we had the training in place, and we finished it all last Wednesday.
Excellent.
Do we make sure that our coaches or anybody who has access to students are, have, carry current CPR certification? Because I think liability-wise, that's going to be probably a hot issue someday, so it's probably something we should make sure that they're up to date and that they are certified, because it'll...
I can check on that. I believe they are, but that's a very, a good question.
Okay, just to make sure that, you know, everybody gets re-certified on a, on a regular basis. Because it's very easy for that to lapse, and somebody not, not has the current credentials on it, so I think it's important for us to protect them and ourselves.
On page four, Paul, when we had the update on the facilities, there were two items that were not quite done, that you had said would be done by the start of school. One of them was defense at the Eagle School. Has that been done?
I believe it has.
It has.
It has, okay. And then, the playground, is that still on schedule for like next week to be done?
Yes, in fact, I received a phone call that said, I believe that they're delivering equipment Wednesday.
Okay. Excellent. On page five, in the middle of the page, it says, "Mr. Jackson noted the prior authorization from the school committee to purchase musical instruments was $75,000. The actual money spent was $55,683, a difference of $7,453." Well, that math doesn't work, so we need to go back, and we need to, subject to fixing that mathematical. The second-to-last paragraph on page five, there is a typo. Ms. Kaminsky asked for an update along this Dr. Martis had talked, I think it's past tense with Dr. Alardi. And then, just the last item I had is Katie, it says here in the minutes, had brought up from Ms. Fullop, the issue on teachers, I mean, nurses receiving professional status, and I know that's not on the agenda tonight, but will we be, I want to make sure that stays at our forefront till we resolve that issue.
I could speak to that briefly.
Okay.
Sure. We actually are looking into that. I think we will be scheduling all of our nurses, I actually talked to Sharon Kelly about this as well last week, that we would like to have a presentation about, about nurses and the role that they play, the important role that they play in schools. And as part of that, I think we can then look at, and in reviewing the, the whole notion of, of professional status, it seems to me the only question is, since it's in statute now, and this is really a point that Kate was, was asking about, and I did investigate this, it appears to me that, that like professional status for teachers and other professionals, it's just part of entering your fourth year, and it's not subject to collective bargaining. So, I think that's an important distinction. The only point of the, of the memo from the commissioner was whether we wanted to grant it early, because we have the, we have the ability to do that. So, that's a discussion that, that we can have, and I think we can fold that into our presentation about nurses. But Sharon Kelly and I are going to meet again this week, and kind of develop what that agenda item will look like. So, I think, I think we'll be in really good shape with that.
All right. Committee members, any questions, comments for the minutes? Kate?
Just one on page three. It's not Dennis Greenberg, it's Dave Greenberg. This is Debbie, and Dennis did such a wonderful job, as did Paul Jackson and our coaches, I just would like him to call the call by the right name. It's what, Chris Greenberg? It's Dave Greenberg. And thank you all again for a wonderful job you did.
Okay. Debbie, any comments or corrections?
No, I've already spoken to Wendy.
Okay. Lata? Katie? I'll take a motion to approve the minutes, subject to the changes.
Just, while you did give me the correct figure, so I will...
You also have the correct figure?
So, can we have the... Sure. $67,547. $67,547, right.
Okay. So, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes, subject to the corrections.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion by Kate, a second by Martha. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item on the agenda is policy review update. Martha, would you like to kick that off, please?
Absolutely. As you know, during this past school committee year, we took on a very, I think courageous adventure, in that we tried to redo the policies, and we have successfully finished our part of it. It's still out to the printer for corrections, admissions, errors, whatever, and the fact that we wanted to put as much wording in there that regards to Foxborough possible. Unfortunately, after the last meeting, Jim Hardy went on vacation for three weeks, and then I found out that his assistant also went on vacation for two weeks. So, you're talking five weeks of people really not being available to edit and whatever. I did speak to his assistant on Friday, and yes, they are working on it. No, it isn't done yet. I think part of, part of the problem was that Jim had missed one of our meetings, which was understandable, and we chose to have that meeting without him. And I think him and Paul had to really get together and go over the changes that we made. And we made, I, I think we made quite a few changes that night, because I know Paul sat there writing frantically, trying to keep up with us. So, not only was Jim going to have to sit with Paul, but he also was going to have to review the CD from that night. So, I think that's kind of put things back a little bit. I would much rather they take their time and do it properly. We've done our part, and, you know, an even bigger part is, is them trying to put this all together for us. So, I'm, I'm not concerned that we don't have it yet. I'd be more concerned if we had to keep sending it back. So, I appreciate the fact that, you know, this is being done, and we will have it, we'll go over it. I think what I'd like to do is, once we get it, probably take, believe it or not, a week or two, because it's going to be a pretty large volume for us to go through, and try to go back to our own notes and make sure that the changes that, as individuals, are in there. And then I'd like us to sit as a subcommittee one more time, or as a committee, and rehash it, and then, you know, anything, go back to them. Then we'll have two public readings. Now, we are not going to sit here in public and read every one of these policies. I mean, that, to me, would be...
I can guarantee you...
That's not going to happen. So, that's why I want as complete and as finished a product as we can get before we, we sit here and we vote on it.
Yeah, I do, I think, you know, I've had experience with this. We, we actually updated the policy manual in Medfield when I was the superintendent of schools there, and just so that the public knows, and even in talking to Jim, and I know he's done extensive policy reviews around Massachusetts over the years, this is generally a two-year process.
Minimum.
For, minimum, for, for most, for most communities. And he reminded me when, when I stopped in when he was meeting with Paul last week, that this process started on April 20th. And for us to be this far along from starting on April 20th is, is really terrific, and I want to give the, the committee and the public, because I know some members of the public have been, had been coming to meetings and working on, and asking questions about this, so, and I think that's been helpful as well. We also have some sections of, of, of specific policies that are still now in our court, and Jim is looking at that and reminding us that, and I met, I met, just as an, just as an example, I met with Jeff Theaters two weeks ago, and gave him the list of ones that I had that said, refer to the high school principal, refer to the high school principal. And I know he's spending some time with his staff doing that. So, really to reiterate what Martha said, you know, we want to do this right, and it will, it will be right. I agree, that's, that's a really good process. I think that, I think we all, at the end of that last meeting, were somewhat hopeful that we were, pleased that we had finished, but we were hopeful, and I think, I'm not sure, I agree with you. I don't think Jim remembered that he had a whole section that he didn't, hadn't reviewed yet. So, I think that's, that's part of it. But I just think it's, I think it's really good work, and, and I think it's something that we'll, we will end up finishing, and I wouldn't want to rush to it. I agree with the process, I think we'll, we'll be able to take a look. And then going through that first and second reading, if I recall from doing this in the past, you could do it section by section, and that can, you know, I'll approve this section based on all the work that's been accomplished after everyone has read through it. So, I think, I think that does make it, and probably doing a section or two each meeting over the next few meetings would probably make the most sense.
I think the key thing was the fact that we did sit there and say, all right, send it to this one, send it to that one, and I think we really kind of lost sight of the fact that a lot of these people were on vacation, it was summertime and whatever, so in all fairness to everybody, I want it done right, and we just need some more time to play with some more.
I just want to comment, too, given the fact that it was the summer, and that we all met on a regular basis, I think we should, we can pat ourselves a little bit on the back, to say that we...
We held to a schedule, that's for sure.
Well, there was certainly an acknowledgement by this committee that the policies were outdated, they were not in compliance with the changes that they made at the legislative level, and there were whole sections that were missing, like on financial policy. And for 10 years, some committee members, some people from the public had urged the committee to redo those. And when you wait 10 years, it's going to take a while to do it. And you're right, Katie, we had a lot of extra nights that we put in to, to do it. And I think this committee has agreed that on an annual basis, we will take a look at those policies, and we will keep up to date, so that we don't have an exercise like we had to go through over the last five to six months. But it's critical that they be done well, as opposed to done quickly. And so, if it takes an extra month to get it done and done right, then I'm fine with that.
Well, one of the other pluses, too, is the fact that we have MASC involved with this. I think what's going to help us to keep things up to date is, as there's changes in the legislature or whatever, they will come back to us with those changes, so that we can address them immediately. And I think that's, that was one of the huge selling points that I had, of having them involved, because otherwise, you know, as this committee changes, and as the legislature changes, there will be changes, and we're going to, we're going to get behind again. So, I think the fact that MASC is involved, and the fact that we're going to review them every, we're obliged to every year, look at that book and either accept it as it is or make our changes. So, I, I think we're going to be way ahead of the game once we finally get it done.
I agree. Any other comments from committee members on policy review updates? All right, let's move on to superintendent and assistant superintendent transition update.
Thank you, Larry. I'll start with the assistant superintendent first, because after you approved Debbie Spinelli's appointment as the assistant superintendent, we have sat down on a couple of occasions and, and reviewed proam letters for a contract, and she has agreed on, on a contract with us. And I just want the public to know that what we've been able to do, and I, and I appreciate the fact that the school committee voted in appointing her for me to do that work with her, because I think that, I think that does make the most sense. It's work I've done with other assistant superintendents in the past in other districts. And that contract is within our budgetary guidelines, it's, I think, regionally competitive, I think it makes a lot of sense, and, and she's very, very pleased. I'll announce tonight that she will begin on November 1st officially. She has a notice provision in, in Stoughton that she will honor, and I certainly will honor with, with my friend and colleague superintendent in Stoughton, Claire McCarthy, which I think is just the right thing to do. But in the meantime, we've agreed that we will kind of informally share Debbie's services for important events and, and important meetings that, that we may have, and if she's needed after November 1st in, in Stoughton for something, we certainly can accommodate that. So, I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense. And the school committee knows that one of the important days that she was able to attend already was our opening day of school with faculty, and I'm pleased to tell you that the faculty was moderately supportive, probably as an... I think they were very, very supportive of Debbie. And Debbie has told me, once she was appointed and people saw it on, on cable, and also read it in the newspaper, both in the Sun Chronicle and the Foxborough Reporter, in those next couple of days, that she's received a number of cards, a number of emails, and a number of phone calls congratulating her, and people telling, telling her that they are thrilled that she's coming back to Foxborough. So, I think this transition over the next few weeks will make tremendous sense. As I, as I said last meeting, I'm really thrilled, because a lot of what Debbie has already accomplished, she will continue to work on here and be able to take us from where we are to that next level. So, I'm very confident about that, and I'm, and I'm very pleased. So, we will be meeting, we've actually talked about, if we decide, you know, later agenda item about the, the retreat, we would certainly be inviting her if she's available, and so, so those are some of the examples. At the same time, I met with the professional development committee to plan our October 5th professional development day, and I invited her, and she was in the middle of two other meetings that she knew that she couldn't get out of. So, we know that that's going to happen over the next couple of months, and as I said earlier, I want to make sure that her transition out of Stoughton is as smooth as her transition into Foxborough. She did tell me, when I talked to her on the phone last week, that she also was able to attend Stoughton's opening day with faculty, and received a great ovation for the work that she's accomplished there. So, so I think that also gives us an even greater sense, not that we necessarily needed one, but an even greater sense that this is a tremendous choice for us, and someone who I think will, will start, will hit the ground running, and is already, I think, ready to do that. She's already met with a number of people, and even as, as she was leaving the high school on our first day, she was talking to people, talking about scheduling meetings and emailing, and I know that, in fact, I also know that Andrea Platt, our K-8 Director of Math and Science, visited Stoughton last week when Debbie wasn't able to come to Foxborough for a meeting. She said, "Fine, I'll meet with you, I want to tell you what we're doing, and all the work that we're doing in math and science, and how we're, how we're implementing a new mathematics program, K-5," and she went through all of that. So, Debbie called me after the meeting and said that they had met with a couple, for a couple of hours, and she felt very good about where, you know, where we are with this, and certainly, you know, certainly will be scheduling more of these meetings, both here and, and in Stoughton. So, so I think that transition is working very, very well, and I think will, will continue to work very well. That's the assistant superintendent part. My part, again, I've had an opportunity to continue to meet with, with, with different people. I've had a terrific meeting with Tim O'Leary, our school police officer, to kind of get me up to date on some of the issues that, that we've been talking about, and, and, you know, kind of build that relationship. I had a very, very good meeting at Town Hall with Randy Scollins. We missed each other in a couple of tries with vacation time and things, and he gave me a great overview of, of how the town constructs budgets, and how they look at revenue, and all of that. So, that was, that was very instructive, and I think we're, we're building a really strong relationship. I know that Paul Jackson already has a very strong relationship with him, so, so that was a good meeting. I mentioned at the last meeting that we had scheduled our administrators' retreat, it was actually the next day after our last meeting. We had scheduled our administrators' retreat, and the New Orleans Patriots were gracious and offered one of their luxury boxes for us to have that meeting. We had, I think, a terrific meeting. We started out the meeting with the "Did You Know?" video, and it gave people an opportunity to think a little bit about, about what students need. people an opportunity to think a little bit about, about what students need, and the challenges that we face. And we brainstormed a lot of ideas about looking at other structures, and looking at online learning, and looking at, at a number of different ways to expand and extend what we do. But, at the same time, they reiterated to me, and I think this is something you folks already know, that, that just building trust and building relationships, and making sure that people feel that their voice is being heard, is really a key to us being able to have those kinds of conversations, because those are challenging conversations. So, we had a terrific meeting, I had a number of people that, that came up to me at the end of the meeting, or sent an email and said, you know, "This is something that, that we need to do each year, and that's something that we'll, we'll continue to do," because there was really a lot of value that people felt. And then the next day, we inducted our new, began our induction of our new teachers, and I know that, I know that we have representatives for the new teachers, and Larry spoke to our new group. And it's a terrific group of 20 new people working at all levels, and I think it was really a huge success.
Including three Foxborough High School graduates.
Three Foxborough High School graduates, and we, we acknowledged them, and we, we again, actually Jack Arthellet wasn't able to, to do the bus tour, but Bob Hicks, a member of the Historical Society, and I think Historical Commission, I think he, there was a distinction there that I learned about. And he, he was able to give us a, I thought he did a terrific job. I sent him a thank you note the other day, thanking him for filling in for Jack, he felt that he had big shoes to fill, and we certainly know Jack well. But, he did a terrific job in sharing the history of Foxborough with our new teachers. Again, our teachers were thrilled, and, and then we got them very much involved in day-to-day activities the next day. So, I think the first two days for our new teachers really worked well. So-
Now, Chris, this evening around 6:20, one of the new teachers was just leaving for the day, and she kind of came down the back stairway, and she was lugging lots of things and making some noise. So, I went over to see who it was, and she reintroduced herself to me, and said that she's worked at a number of school districts, and she can't say enough about the environment here in Foxborough. She said she just absolutely loves it, she said, "Look what time it is, and I'm just leaving for the day." She said, "I just love what I do, I love the school, and I'm glad I made the decision to come here." So, I think that's a strong statement from one of the new folks that just joined us.
Yeah, just as, just as adding on to that, I was in the Ahern School the other day, and, and was talking, as I was wandering around the hallways, talking to Allison Mello, our new middle school math specialist, and she has worked in a number of districts, and said to me, and I said, "Well, what do you think, this is the first few days?" And she said, she had an experience in New York that she thought she would never be able to replicate, and she said, "This is much better than that, and I just, I just need to tell you that." And she said, "I don't, I know the superintendent always wants to hear good news," and I said, "No, I don't always want to hear good news, that's not going to allow us to move forward all the time." So, but it was, it is nice to hear, and I think just checking in with people when you see them, and asking them how it's going. Because that first year in any new environment is always, can always be difficult for people. It was, it was good to see, I think we did a very good job of hiring, and we really have a range of people. You mentioned Foxborough High School graduates, we have Foxborough residents, we have a mix of people from across, across their educational careers. We have some people that are new to education, we have some veterans. So, we really have, I think, a really good mix of, of new staff. So, I think we've started that induction. I know that, I actually was able to also talk to people who are training, retraining our mentors. We have a very good mentor mentee program, and I think it's been really acknowledged by the Department of Education as, as something that they would like to see us show some of the school districts. So, we've, I think we've, I think we've really, I'll talk more about, you know, kind of the opening, and what we've been able to do later in the agenda. But, just to give an idea, upcoming, I have, I have a meeting with one of the officials, some of you know Dave Sweeney, I have a meeting with him tomorrow, as I learn more about the Charter School, another part of the community that I don't know a lot about, but I, I really do want to know a lot more about. So, I have a meeting with him tomorrow. Tomorrow night, I'm with the Taylor School PTO, and I'm hoping to hear more about their activities, so I'll be with them at 7 o'clock tomorrow night. I just scheduled a meeting, actually Wendy just scheduled it for me today. I have a meeting with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council next Tuesday, next Tuesday evening at 6 o'clock at the Media Center at the Igo Elementary School. So, again, I'm, and I'll say this publicly, and I know that Wendy's scheduling more as we go along contacting people, but we just create lists and then recreate some of these lists. I know Lorraine Brew is in the audience, we had a terrific meeting, the chair of the Foxborough Advisory Committee, and anyone that anyone thinks I should meet with, as I get to know the community again, is just really helpful to me. And I want people to know that, as some of you now understand, that the door is open, and although some of you have already found out I'm not always inside on that door, but the door is always open, but if you, you know, I'm certainly around the buildings if I'm not in the office. So, get a chance to, anyone you think I should meet with, I think I'm meeting with some of the people at the Senior Citizen Center soon, and we're scheduling, we're scheduling some other activities. So, I'm interested in just getting to know the, you know, more about the community as, as we move through. So, any, anyone who has ideas about people that, or groups of people that they think I should meet with, just let me know. So, that's the transition so far.
Any questions from the committee on the transition?
Sounds good.
Okay, let's move on to preliminary enrollment by grade in school. And this is important, Chris, to cover, because when we did the budget last fall, there were some questions raised by a committee member on forecasting, and how we forecasted enrollment and the accuracy. So, Paul had done some forecasting, and he used a different source to validate his numbers, et cetera. And so, as we look at this, would also like to kind of understand how do these actual numbers of 2883 tie back to Paul's projection, and how close are we in that sense?
Good. Let me, and I think that's a terrific question, because that's, those are actually discussions we've been having the last few days, in terms of, in terms of that. So, I'll, Paul, do you, do you want to speak to that? And then I, then I want to speak to what, kind of what we should be doing, at least what I've been doing with enrollment data over the years, so that we can begin to make sure that our numbers are as accurate as they possibly can be.
I'm not prepared, I didn't bring with me my budget book, and I'm not really prepared to compare what we have on this sheet to what we have projected.
Is it fairly close, Paul, or?
I think it's close, I think we're up a little bit at the Ahern, and I think we're down a little at the elementary level.
I mean, it looks like we're 11 students down from last September. And I think when you put the budget forecast together, you had actually forecasted flat to slightly decrease in the number of students, which is what raised the question on the part of a member, with the number of homes that were being sold, et cetera. But, it does look as though, when you compare the enrollment to last September, that we're down a little bit.
Yes. Yes, and I believe we had projected we would be down.
Right.
I think one thing that we always have to take a look at is the kindergarten enrollment, because that in and of itself is very deceiving. Because we do not have full-day kindergarten here, there are parents who actually pay to put their children in a full-day kindergarten someplace else, or they're off to the charter school. So, I think if we really work on trying to institute full-day kindergarten here, obviously you're going to see that number rise, but you're also going to see those students stay within the system.
Right.
Because once they go off to a charter school, be it here in Foxborough or anyplace else, because I know we've had them in other charter schools, because it's a full day, and they start there, then they tend to stay there. And that, unfortunately, will cost us money in the long run. So, I think we have to make ourselves more attractive. And one thing that we always, because that's a big change, from 179 to 217 in the first grade. And I think when you see some of these houses selling, and more children coming into the system, that's something we really have to- It'd be interesting, when you talk to Dave Sweeney, to find out how many, just a number, how many full-time Foxborough kindergarten children are there. And I think that will help us to see why this number is where it is.
And in fact, Martha, I believe the numbers from last year say that, as we went into September of last year, we had 191 in kindergarten, 198 in first grade, so that the differential this year is far greater than what it was last year.
Well, people are going to move in, they're going to move out, but I think, you know, it's going to come that we're going to have to have full day. So, I think we need to try and jump on any grant money, and try to institute as quickly as we can.
And just to speak to that issue, just the grant issue, I met with Ingrid Alati last week, and there is a new kindergarten grant coming out. We expect that it's not, hasn't been. And she was able to talk to people at the Department of Ed over the summer, and come up with some, what will the grant look like? We don't have all the specifics. One of the, one of the things that it doesn't fund, and I'll have to look more closely at it when it, when it does officially come out, at least we're led to believe that now, is additional staff for full day. It's more around training and, and all of that. So, but I also know that, you know, this is, this is an area that the legislature has been trying to deal with, and that I know the governor has a strong interest in, in terms of, of kind of what I call the next phase of education reform, in that we really do need to look more closely at offering full day. The other area that, that we may want to consider is, there are a number of communities that offer some sort of tuition-based part for the, for the second part of the full day, to make it, to make it full. We're analyzing our, we're analyzing our enrollment space, our actual classroom space, to make sure that we could, we could fit that. But, there also are ways to phase in it, you know, over a period of time too. So, that's something I think that should be part of our retreat when we discuss, you know, how to move the system forward in the future, because it is, it is a major attraction for-
Kids establishment.
Yeah.
I know, when we went in on the hill, and you and I were able to sit with Pat Haddad, and we talked about the kindergarten grant, and she was surprised that a lot of cities and towns didn't apply for the grants, and it was a two-year grant. And I said, "Well, quite honestly, I think a two-year grant is unreasonable, a three-year grant would be more attractive to cities and towns, because you're asking or assuming that a town right now can assume that responsibility within two years, and it's not, you know, we're not over, we're not over the hump. We might be in a better position than maybe some of the other cities and towns, but for other towns." And she was kind of taken back that people hadn't taken this money. And I said, "Well, maybe that's one of the things you ought to think about, that you ought to turn this into a three-year grant versus a two-year." So, you know, and she listened to what we had to say, and where we were coming from, but I, I think a two-year grant, it's unreasonable.
The other thing we have to take into consideration is that the charter school, our four-year moving average is 138 Foxborough students in the charter school, and last, in this current year, 150 enrolled. And so, if we were to magically be able to attract all of those students back to Foxborough, that creates an issue in terms of capacity. So, it's not just an operating expense, in operating a pre-kindergarten. What we also have to spend some time this year is really looking at each of our schools, and the size of the classrooms, and how much space, and how we would do that. Because we have committed as a committee that we will be forward-looking in our capital needs for the buildings, and as we work through this year, the, the idea around pre-K, if that's going to have a longstanding impact on our buildings, then we need to be talking about that now, and not when it happens. And so, last year, we spent a lot of time on the high school, we spent, you know, working on that potential for state aid. This year, I would hope as a committee, we'll be focusing on all of our space needs, and look at the growth potential for the town, and the impact if we were to do the, the pre-K, and what would that have as an impact in terms of the numbers in the pre-K, or how many other parents might bring their children back to the school system, and what impact that'll have on the, on the classrooms. It's not just operating those capitals as well.
You know what surprises me, Larry, when you look at these figures, look at the 8th through the 11th grade. 8th grade is 231, 9th, 239, 225, and 243. And then look at the K through 3, 179, 217, 204, 216. That's a big change-
Right.
-in what we have coming into the system. So, you can't help but wonder, you know, it does impact us that these students are going someplace else. Certainly, we have seats for these children-
Right.
-if they came back even into these slots at this point. It's not, I don't think we're going to have to add teachers per se, we'll be filling one or two more seats here or there. But, you know, when you think about the type of money that goes off someplace else, it's, it has an impact.
Well, I hope we will do that. Martha, I think you make an excellent point with all-day kindergarten. You know, one of the things I hope this committee will do is that there's no problem with us being competitive. We lose kids to Bishop Fi and Zavarian, and hey, they have some great things to offer. So don't we. We're losing kids to Sabbath. The interesting dynamic now, and you say, Martha, to, to take a look at that all-day kindergarten, the competitive market pressure is going to continue to be on it. If the state legislature grants a charter Sabbath school for Brockton, in order to maintain where the Sabbath school in Foxborough, they're going to have to continue to outreach to get students. They're going to have their smaller class size, they have some other programs. So, we need to keep our competitive advantage so that we don't lose more at the kindergarten or at the high school level. Because as Larry pointed out, if we had 138 last year, we had 150, then that's something we need to look at. We talk about doing that every year. So, my question, we don't, we talk about it, but we don't always get to do it. I know all of us are anxious to look forward to what the actual class numbers are for 7th and 8th grade at the Ahern, and also the high school. And I don't need to push you, because normally we don't get that until end of September, sometime in October. But, do you have any idea when we'll get a look at the class enrollment? And we also usually take a look at the number of people who moved into the system, where they came from, and the number of people that moved out, just to have a feel for that kind of competitive analysis.
Yeah, it, again, I'll just, you know, utilize other districts, and one of the things that perhaps I should have said when we began this discussion is that any early September enrollment numbers are somewhat suspect, because the numbers do fluctuate in the, in the first couple of weeks of school, as, as we've identified some kids that maybe haven't moved, and they're absent. And again, this is the first day number. What I've always used for comparison purposes is that October 1st number, because that's the one that you report to the state. That's the one that you actually can look back on and say, "This is the official enrollment number for every district across Massachusetts." So, so I was thinking that that would be the number we should use, and when we do any comparisons, it's, you know, it's, it's difficult to use a September and a June number, and for budget purposes, and for planning purposes, we should be using that October 1st number. And if there's some sort of odd fluctuation at any particular time, we can deal with that. But, most of the time, in I think most communities, that's the number that everyone, that's a number that has to do with funding, and all sorts of other things with the state as well. So, I think we take that number as our, this is the enrollment of the Foxborough Public Schools, this is the enrollment at each grade level, and then we can then break that out, really any way we want to. We can break it out by specific classes, we can break it out by specific courses at the high school, we can break it out by specific teams at the middle school level. So, that's, you know, that's very easy to do. I'll look back on, on the type of data that you are used to seeing, and then if we can, you know, if we can enrich that in some way, based on data that I've offered to school committees in the past, then we'll, you know, we'll certainly take a look at that. And that does, particularly in our budget process here, that does allow us then to get into the budget process, because now we know what our enrollment numbers are, and we can check to see if there's any other housing differences, or any new development, or anything else that we might, that we might anticipate that would, that would cause our enrollment to fluctuate in any way. So, so we certainly, we certainly could do that, Kate, I think it's a, I think it's a very good suggestion. The other piece that I was going to, when you, when you mentioned, you know, students leaving, again, you know, I've had conversations with particularly students leaving at the high, at the high school level, where we exited to view the families, and say, you know, what, what are some of the, you know, what are the, you know, why are you leaving? And, you know, is it anything to do with, and sometimes that can be very instructive. Sometimes it has to do, at least in my experience, sometimes it has to do with a parochial education, sometimes it has to do with athletics, sometimes it has to do with family legacy, in that they've always gone to ex-private school, and they have a, have a, an interest in doing that. But, you know, again, you know, being, you know, moved to the community again, it's, it's, it'll be interesting to really get into those conversations, because I believe what you believe. I believe this high school can compete with any high school. And, and I think we just need to talk more about that, and talk about, you know, all the areas, and what are people concerned about? Are they concerned about safety and security? Are they concerned about how students interact with each other? Are they concerned about course offerings? Are they concerned about us being able to meet the needs of all students? I mean, there are always a number of conversations that come up in this area. So I think we can have those conversations, and I'd be interested to see, you know, what people are, what people are thinking, so, you know, we certainly could do that.
Go ahead, Martha.
One of the things that I've noticed since I've sat on the committee, when we, when we started talking about kids moving in, now the system, we're going off to private schools and stuff, so I've, I've made it a point to always check the honor rolls. And I think Foxborough should be very proud of the foundation that it builds for these students that go off to these schools, when you see them on the honor roll at Severian, at Bishop Fiennes, or wherever else they've gone. So I, I think Foxborough should kinda pat itself on the back a little bit, that we've done a great job of preparing these students. Most of them, I, I probably think all of them have to take an entrance exam to get into these schools. So I, I think Foxborough should be very proud of the fact that we do prepare these students to go wherever they go. And I, it bears itself when you read the, the honor rolls for these schools, and you see Foxborough students that freshman year, sophomore year, continue to excel, but they got their foundation here, and I think we should be proud of that.
And we do get a good number of students that come back to us. That's the other thing we need to take a look in that analysis. It happened last year, and I think it's happening again. So what encourages people to leave? What encourages people to come back? That's just good information.
Well, one of the things is when we didn't have hockey. We had students going off to schools and swimming. You know, they'll go off to different schools for that, so I mean, there is, if you ask, you'll find out. If you don't ask, then, you know, don't assume.
And there are generally, at least this has been my experience in other districts, there are generally very good reasons and interests that people have, and, and some things that we, we may not offer. But you can also kind of hear, you know, maybe little nuggets of information about what you, and, and some of that can be perception, you know, around how, what people believe about, you know, what's going on at Foxborough High School, and, and, you know, having opportunities to tour the building and see what's going on, and, and all of that, both from a student perspective, which I know we do with the transition piece, but also from a parent perspective. You know, how do we make sure that parents feel? It's a little bit of that, you know, my ideas about personalizing, you know, knowing these families well, and personalizing what we do, and having conversations with people, having them feel that they can come to us and say, you know, I'm not happy about this, or have you thought more about doing something else differently? You know, we, we do have an interest, and I know, actually, I was talking to Bert Delaney today, and, and I know some of the high school administration has already had conversations with Virtual High School, to look at Virtual High School and the offerings that, that they may have. I wanna get into that next conversation, because I've had experience with Virtual High School, and we brought it into Medfield High School years ago, and, and so that just expands the offerings that, that students, and, and because in some smaller high schools like this one, it's hard to staff some of those discrete courses that you'd like kids to have an opportunity. You know, maybe that's how we start to get Chinese into the curriculum, you know, those kinds of ideas that we've already started to talk about, that, that would give students a wider range of, of, of opportunities to excel, so. And, and there are a number of other ideas, too, that, that I know that the administrators have been thinking about.
I think the homeschools use Virtual High Schools and a lot of online, right?
Right, a lot of online, yeah.
And they do very well, too, so, you know, I, I think it's something we all have to look into. I think last year, was it last year, was the first year we showcased the high school and did an open house for the middle school in order for them to see what was offered up here? And I, I think it came across very well. I think people were quite surprised at what, you know, you have the elementary, you know, thinking in, in the middle school, so I, I think selling us a little bit better is, is a better way of doing it. So I, I hope they're gonna do that again this year.
They did it, this, this past spring was the second time they did it.
Was it the second time?
I believe, yeah, and I think that piece is critical.
Will they do it in the fall, then, or not?
I'm not sure.
I think they did it in the spring.
Did they do it in the fall?
I don't know. I would love, Martha, I think, you know, that, because people will be starting to take the entrance exams if they're gonna consider.
Exactly, in the fall.
For us to have the, that's in November and December, I think the cut is in December. So I, I think the open house that you mentioned was to specifically, yeah.
I couldn't remember. Was it showcase the high school?
We got it in the fall.
It was in the spring. It was in the spring when my daughter was going into the ninth grade. Now, I don't, and that was, she's in town now, so. And I know they, I'm pretty sure they did it, we did it last year. But I think that the high school oftentimes, for the, for the parent who's coming in with their first child, it is a mystery. The high school is a mystery. There's not a lot of, so, a forum like that is a wonderful opportunity, I think, for, you know, for tours, you know, for, I just, I think it's very helpful, because if they do have another place that they're looking at, they may not even really consider Foxborough High School if they don't have that opportunity to see what we can offer, so. I think as much as we can do that, that's, that's important.
It's incumbent upon us not to take for granted that someone will put their child in this school district, because it's part of their taxes. We need to be able to demonstrate to them that this is in the best interest of their student, and that we can offer them the things that will help their student prepare for life after high school. And I think at times, we've taken for granted that information and decided that people have what information that they have. And I think if we don't go a little bit more aggressive in showing people, for instance, the engineering class that we're offering this year, the discussions we've been having with the Patriots about offering a similar program instead of an engineering, but in, since they have a radio station and they have a, a publication house and everything in-house, you know, how do we maybe do some things with Jerry Roy and them? So I think that as we start to innovate and do some things that are very different, people are not gonna know it, because, you know, eight thousand people watch the school committee meeting every week. They're going to, they're gonna know it because we proactively reached out to them and shared with them what we're doing differently, and why this school is going to enrich their student.
Well, it's all about selling yourself, and I think we have to do that.
Those that are starting eighth grade, they're gonna, that's exactly what those parents are gonna do, and they're gonna start it in the fall, so I'd love to know if they're gonna do one again this year.
Yeah, I'll certainly check on that.
They had our high school profile, Jeff Theodoss and his team did a great job last year, and.
They had posters in the cafeteria that the parents would go and talk to about what we're offering, and they had, you know, stations that, it was, it was very good.
They had students as well, talking about extracurricular activities and sports, and...
Really, it was very...
And I believe Jeff Theodoss said it was very well attended. Was it better attended than they thought it was going to be? So that's, that was the other...
So that shows a need, also.
Right.
And does the student council play a role?
I'm not sure.
I think the National Honor Society, I could be wrong, but I thought it's our group from the National Honor Society that worked as tour guides and went over to the high school. I know I came in con...
I know student council does do tours in the summer, like at the end of the summertime before the ninth grade is gonna come in, or they have in past years.
Okay.
And we should check on that, too.
Anything else from anybody on opening of school update?
No, we're doing, I thought we were doing enrollment.
I'm sorry, enrollment, you're right, enrollment.
Just, just one comment. I have in my book here the enrollment as of October 2nd, 2006, and just, again, talking about the kindergarten, here, the numbers are one hundred and ninety in kindergarten, and first grade, it's two seventeen.
Right, well, remember last year, we had a situation where the, the numbers that were reported in September were different than in October. Katie had asked questions about where these missing students were, and we found out that the report was wrong in September that was submitted to us.
One of the other things, if may Dr. Morris, when we get the breakdown of the actual class sizes for, for each of the schools, usually, late spring or early summer, there's also a printout that we would get once it's done, so I would imagine it would fit with the October timeframe, of how people did on the advanced placement, and I think it's always good for us just to take a look at that, and to see, okay, are we still increasing? Because Foxborough was still somewhat behind, and we wanna be competitive with what we offer. So I'd like to see those numbers, if we could as well, on the advance, the number of successful advanced placement courses.
I think Jeff usually comes and gives a presentation after they take them. Am I wrong?
Well, we haven't had any this summer, but I know that they, that they're tested, and we'll get the results, and there's awful lot on everyone's plate, but at some point, you know, just like we get the SAT scores and the AP, that's usually in, in the fall, and I, I just wanna make sure that we're gonna get it, so that we don't fall behind a point, because we get the, that's the timeframe that we look at that data.
Good, okay.
Okay, Chris, you wanna move on to the opening of school?
Sure. Let me just, yeah, as I, as I mentioned when I talked about bringing Debbie Spinelli on board, we, we had a very positive opening faculty meeting here at Foxborough High School. We started out just so that the public is aware, and I know the committee's aware, because all of you were here either live or on the air. And we, we started out with some refreshments in the, in the cafeteria, and it was nice to meet people, reacquaint with, with a number of different people, which was terrific. And we started our meeting in the high school auditorium with Todd Kizer, the president of the Teachers Association, offering an update and a welcome, and he's been very, very positive about working closely together and raising issues and, and building, as, as I mentioned earlier, building the trust and building those relationships back and, and all of that. So his message, I thought, was very optimistic, and I thanked him afterwards for that. And then, and then we went right into the taped, and I wanna thank, and I know that Larry wants to thank as well, the Foxborough Cable Access for the work that they did. They did a wonderful job of putting that, putting that presentation together. And Larry offered his opening remarks, which were very, very well received by the faculty. And we went into the Did You Know video, and it, I thought, worked very, very well. I had mentioned to you that we could hear the oohs and the ahs, and the questions, and what does that mean, and, oh, no, I didn't know that, and, and I think it sparked some interest, and I think we've already had some conversations, informal conversations more than anything else, with, with many of the faculty, and I think they felt that, that, you know, we were looking ahead, and I think that was a perfect video for us to, us to show, so. And then I welcomed them and talked a lot more about just opening the conversations and having discussions, and, and really valuing people, because, as you mentioned at, at the last meeting, and I know that was mentioned in the EQA report, the faculty that we have here is very, very well regarded, and the working conditions that have been created through the maintenance programs and the forward-thinking around the quality of the schools themselves, and, and making sure that supplies and materials are in place, and, and all of that was really something that, that I wanted to make sure that people paid close attention to, so. Teachers were very, very upbeat. I was, you know, as I kidded with them at the end, I was concerned that maybe I spoke too long and they just wanted to get up, but they claimed that they gave me an ovation. I think they probably did. It was very nice and really very heartening, and something that I think just allows us to really have a good opening. The key, though, as all of you know, is then what happens when students come in? And, and I wanna give our, I wanna give Paul Jackson and our Transportation Department credit, because the first thing you do, and it sounds very simple, but it's very complicated, and, and that's getting students from their home to our schools. And that went very, very smoothly. We had a very small number of, of calls, looking at different bus stops and things, and that's just the natural part of the first day or two of school. So the, the first day, and it seems like some days, it seems like it was weeks ago, and it actually was just last Tuesday, we've just been in school for, for a week now, for five days. And that went very, very well. And again, the other part of it, and we've all read and heard these horror stories around the state about not getting students to the right, to the right stop home and, and all of that, that was very smooth, and Paul, you can, you've been doing this for a few years here, I think it was, it was as good as it's ever been, and, and again, I give Paul, and Joan Goodwin, and Pat Larkin, and a number of other people a tremendous amount of credit. They were working on Pam McCauley and others, working on this day after day after day, making sure that, that this was really refined. And, and then, so then, but then on Wednesday, there's always an important piece, and that's getting the kindergarteners in, into, into school on time. And it's hard to get them in on time, because their parents always wanna take pictures at the bus stops, and all of us remember doing that, so we can all own it, that that was a good thing to do, but it does slow down the runs, and, but it, it worked out, it worked out again. It worked out very well. I was able to visit each one of the buildings, and, and things really went, went very, very well. So, again, I think we're off to a good start, and the credit really belongs to the hard work, as all of you know, and as Michael Leary mentioned at the last meeting, the buildings are in very, very good shape, nice and clean. People noticed that. I've, I've heard a number of comments when I was, when I was visiting buildings and visiting the schools, that people did notice that, and the work that, through the capital budget and through other work around painting and refurbishing and, and all of that, people did notice that, so. So I think we've been off to really a tremendous start, and, and again, I give all the credit to, to the faculty, and to the principals, and to the directors, and, and others who were doing a lot of this work during the summer. Teachers in early, as I would expect, and as I certainly saw people in early, getting their rooms all ready, and, and, you know, being ready to go, so. I think it's been, I think it's been a terrific five first day, first five days of school, and I'm very, very pleased about that. I just, I just wanna acknowledge everyone who works so hard for them.
It's amazing, the feedback that I've heard, and I know probably my other committee members have, when people have said, I can't believe that after forty years, you finally replaced some shades in the high school. Or when people said, I can't believe the new whiteboard I have, because the old one was so terrible. It's the little things that we've done over the last year that seem to have made a big difference. It's purchasing the additional supplies that have been frozen for the last four years. It's adding to the audio visual, it's changing on some of the whiteboards, the, the screening we did down at Borrow and things, really just made a big difference. It showed people that the committee and the community really cares about those things. And I was just surprised how much feedback I received from people on those little things and the difference that they made.
I read into a teacher in Macy's, and I, it's funny, she must've hit the jackpot, because she got new shades and new whiteboards, so she was really quick. I hear you talking about this one and that one.
Some waited so long, the technology changed, you know, we don't pull down anymore, they were all really ratted, and when Dave Sweeney was here, there were several English teachers who really wanted to use them. Well, now, the technology's moved on, we don't need to, we need to get other things for them, so.
Everybody seems very happy.
Any other comments, Martha, from you?
No.
Katie? Beverly? Kate?
I'm at Sam.
Okay, let's move on to process for school improvement and district improvement plan updates, Chris.
Yeah, I wanted to raise this topic for the committee, just so that I'll have some guidance on this as we move forward, in terms of what do you wanna see, how do we want, how do we wanna approach this? I know we've been talking about quarterly updates, how we wanna approach this, and, you know, I think it's, I think it's important, in some ways, quarterly is more difficult when, you know, when we really, if we thought about quarterly, we'd be talking about having something at the end of this month, but it's really the beginning of the school, so we have, we need to really think about specific dates that we can target, and how we go about doing that, and then how we wanna approach, how we look at the, how we look at the improvements.
I think, Chris, from my perspective, there's two things that I'd like to ask you to give us some guidance on from your perspective. We had lots of discussion about the lack of plans, and then the plans that we did have weren't very measurable, and so we put a lot of effort into creating measurable plans. But they weren't your measures, they were other people's measures. So the first thing I'd like to hear in early October are your thoughts on the plans themselves. What else might you measure? What do you think we're measuring with too much detail? Kinda like to get your initial thoughts on the plans themselves, and, and what we might do to tailor them a little bit to you, because obviously, you're now the superintendent, and we need to take into consideration your thoughts and ideas. And then as part of that, what we've said as a, as a committee, we wanna enhance accountability. And so I'd like to hear, it doesn't matter to me whether it's quarterly or another period, I'd like to hear from you, what do you believe, based on the plans themselves, makes the most sense in terms of having the data to report to us? There's no sense having a meeting to talk about, but not having data to say whether we've made progress or not. So I think what the committee wanted is they wanted the transparency, and we've been sharing these things, they wanted the accountability, and they wanted them to be, to be measurable. And I think we have those, but those were all done under a different leadership. So I think it's important to get your insight. I don't think you should just adopt them as is and say, well, that's what I'm stuck with. I think we really would like your experience... I think we really would like your experience, your insight and your thoughts on when would be the appropriate time to have the first update, when the first scores are in, or the first measures are appropriate. And I don't know how the rest of the committee feels, but I think we need to give you that opportunity.
Absolutely, I couldn't agree more. And I think Dr. Morris, once we know what you want, that, what additional measurements, I mean, for instance, there are things that we know this time of the year we get updates on. You may want to have those as part of the plan, you may decide you don't want to, or you may say, you know what, most companies will do it on quarterly, but that doesn't feel right for education. Six months feels too long. But there might be something in between where we know we have the beginning of the year, we have a kickoff of all kinds of activities, and then we have also midterm and we have the end of the year, kind of follow-up. So it might be, but I, as a guest on my part, I'd love to hear your input. What measurements are you comfortable with? What do you think is doable? What do you think is, you know, would be best for the organization?
Chris, do you think that the first meeting in October would give you enough time or do you think it's the second meeting in October? What's the timeline that you need to review the plans, have the dialogue with your leadership team and come back with some of your thoughts?
I was just going to raise, just when Kate said it, the dialogue with the leadership team is really important.
Right.
And, you know, obviously they have better history than I do. My sense is probably the second meeting in October, given that we have a few, we're actually going to be talking about some things anyway. I'd like to do the AP and the SAT information in that first meeting. We want to recognize the nurses. We have some updates on some other things that we want to make sure that's on the agenda for that first meeting in October. So it would just give me a couple of extra weeks, which I think would be.
Let's just head to the second meeting in October and we'll put that on the agenda.
I think that's a great idea, Larry, the points that you brought up.
The other thing is, I'd like to see an ongoing building-based needs. In other words, don't wait till the end of the year to tell us that something's totally falling apart, so that we can try to plan accordingly or if we have some budget areas that we can, you know, get money from.
Right.
In other words, I don't want anybody within any of the schools going without for a whole year, only for us to find out that we have a huge surplus at the end of the year. I'd rather fill the needs within the schools that we need.
Going along with that, Martha, one of the things that I think would be important, again, Chris, you could decide when the time would be right, but in regards to the specialists at the new hires that we have, the new positions, I think it's important for us to get feedback, not at the end of the year, but in a timely manner as to how many children are being serviced by those specialists, what the needs are, you know, what is it that, just whatever, you know, how is that going? Is there something else that those specialists need in place? The timeframe, how many hours are being spent in the classroom individually? Because I think at the end of the year, again, or not at the end of the year, but as we're preparing the budget, we want to be able to substantiate and document the need for these specialists. And again, we can, I don't know how the data can be looked at in terms of those students that are being targeted, in terms of their MCAS scores, I don't know whether we can draw any correlations to the services that the specialist provides with those individuals, but just information on that, I think, is going to be important.
You're right, are we meeting expectations? It's an experiment, so is it the right experiment? And we probably need that for.
And I think that also applies to the early intervention position as well that we have.
Early childhood.
Yes, early childhood.
Just to follow up on that, one of the things, Chris, that the EQA folks criticized is that for the period that was under audit, the town kind of had a freeze on spending and so we weren't adding positions and those kinds of things. Well, what we did as a committee last year is we asked Jan to go back and look at every single position in the district and to evaluate those existing positions with the to-be states. So Jan came back and said, "I really believe we need these math specialists, but I recognize we just can't add all these extra people unless I kind of rank my priorities." And so she came back and said, "I want to add these positions, but I want to eliminate these positions." And I think that we want to continue that throughout the school year and going forward, but we also want to be evaluating the positions that we added. Have they added the value? Have they had the impact that we thought? And we want you to know, I think as superintendent, that we expect you and your team to be looking at every position kind of in a zero-based budgeting. And there's always more needs than there are opportunities, so you're going to have to come back to us and say, as Jan said, "I'd love to keep all these positions and add all the new ones, but I know I can't. And so here's my rationale for the impact of taking these away and here's my rationale for adding these and here's what I think the net difference was." And the committee agreed to that and we funded that. So as a new superintendent, it's important for you to know that this is a committee that is supportive of new ideas, it's supportive of trying some things differently, and just because the position was there last year doesn't mean it should be there in the following year. If there's a greater need, we have to be able to make some tough decisions. And we made those tough decisions. We added back guidance and we added back library and we brought in math specialists. So you should get up to speed with Paul on all the positions we added, talking to your leadership team about the rationale that they had, because it came from them, it didn't come from Jan, it came from the team. And then what criteria did they have that they would be able to measure success? Is that something you agree with as the superintendent? And then as we get into the budget cycle this year in the late fall, I would expect for you to be commenting to us on the success on an interim basis of those new positions and what other thoughts you have going forward regarding staffing.
Right, that makes sense.
Anything else from any of the committee members on this item? Okay, Chris, moving on to planning for the school committee. I don't particularly like the word retreat because it has such a negative connotation, but it's really a planning session. We wanted to have a session where we could discuss goals and objectives for the superintendent and his leadership team and goals and objectives for the school committee, because it's just as important that we have our own goals and objectives we hold ourselves accountable to and allow the public to hold us accountable to. So we talked about having an evening where we could discuss at length. At our last meeting, we asked the public if anyone had thoughts or ideas on goals and objectives, submit them through Wendy's office, we'd take those into consideration. Because it's going to be a workshop, it's really going to be a school committee workshop, but we didn't want the public to feel left out and to feel that they couldn't submit thoughts, ideas or concerns. And so we opened it up for that. But Chris, maybe you can update us on where you are now in terms of this planning session and what you're going to recommend to the committee.
Yes, I think, obviously, it's difficult to find open dates where everyone is available. We do happen to have one next week as part of our regularly scheduled meeting times. And I would suggest that we look at an offsite. Actually, Wendy and I on Friday met with the Recreation Department over at, is there a name for that building? I just call it Old St. Augustine's Camp.
The Rec Hall.
Is that why we call it what we call it?
The Rec Hall.
The Rec Hall.
No, not the chapel, the actual Rec Hall.
The Rec Hall. And again, I think in the spirit, they were wonderful, in the spirit of, again, working closely with the town, they would love to host us there. It's, as many of you know from being in that area, it's very informal, which is, I think, the tone that we need to set, very informal, give us a chance to bring a couple of easels and write down ideas and throw out ideas. One of the things that I did is I actually signaled Glenn Kutcher, the Executive Director of the Mass Association of School Committees. He's willing to facilitate if we're interested. I had him, I said, "I don't know, you know, I don't know until we talk about it at a school committee meeting," whether that, but I asked him if the date was available. It is available and he put a hold on it pending another conversation that I can have with him. He has done, he, I think some of you know, I've known Glenn, we both started within a few months of each other running associations and so I've known him for a number of years and I've interacted with him in these kinds of settings when I was the Executive Director of the Superintendents Association. So he's very skilled at process and working through issues and also knows, as, and we talked about this, that this is fairly commonplace in many communities, that the school committee and superintendent get together on occasion and do go through a workshop type of setting. And I think that, I think that would make some sense and given that we have a date already locked in and it's, I think, very difficult to find other dates, I know that Wendy's been trying to figure out all of your calendars and my calendar at the same time and I know how difficult that is. So I'm suggesting that we do that. We certainly, we can start at any time. We, you know, we mentioned six, maybe a time that we start and we, you know, work through a few hours and come up with, and again, the goal is that we construct some goals because we've committed to doing that, you know, putting together goals that we share that we would work towards. And as I mentioned, that was part of the agenda that we used for the administrators' work session, not retreat. And we, I think we have some ideas. We have a number of ideas on chart paper and I can bring some of those with us and we can certainly utilize what, you know, what the administrators were thinking, how we've gone above doing that, but.
It would be clear, though, that the entire evening would be devoted to planning, there would be nothing else, there wouldn't be any agenda items that get added in afterwards. So I don't want the public to think we want to do something out of the eyes of the public.
We're not conducting business, what we're doing is doing things.
This is a workshop to, as the superintendent's contract calls, it calls for us as a committee to work with him to establish goals and objectives within 90 days of his employment, which is September 30th. And so in order to do that, we want to do it in a more informal setting to work through that. At our last meeting, I shared a copy of a memo that I'd written to the committee with some thoughts and ideas around goals and objectives. We asked, we've reached out to the public and asked them for their thoughts as well. Having a professional facilitator in a more casual setting will be very helpful. And then there'll be minutes taken of the discussion and those minutes will be public minutes and they'll be available to the public as well. So everything will be done, you know, above board in a transparent way so that at the following meeting, the first meeting in October, we'll be reviewing those minutes and we're approving those minutes and they'll be part of the history of the Foxborough School Committee. Is six o'clock doable for the committee?
Absolutely.
It is for me.
I'll probably be flying by.
Okay.
But I'll get there as quick as I can.
Okay. We thought people would have more energy if we started a little earlier than if we started later and went later. And we want this to be a high-energy exercise, so we thought a little bit earlier might be helpful.
Do you need us to bring some food so we maintain that energy?
Larry, I just briefly talked about.
Those cookies did me in that last time, boy, did they work.
Yeah, Chris and I talked about that. We'll have food there, we'll work something.
I love Mills Street, but could we go to the Gillette's, David? Or maybe to the next one.
So there'll be some food we can work through while.
They're in session now. It's a little different.
Just putting a little plot. Chris, any, just how long do you envision us going to? I'm willing to take however long it takes, but just for planning with our family.
Well, around six to nine.
Nine, yeah.
Six to nine.
Oh, I thought you were going to say September 11.
Well, wasn't telling your family what you're doing.
I would like to ask the committee to block six to 10. There's a goal to try to finish by nine. But this is so important to us and we've not done one of these. So it's very important that we devote the time to come up with, you know, because we could come up with a list of goals and objectives that it would take, Chris, you know, three years to do. We don't want to do that, you know? So we need to be able to prioritize a whole list of goals and objectives down to a manageable number that he can then work through. And some of those goals and objectives we may talk through, they may be for Mr. Jackson or they may be for the Assistant Superintendent or they may be for someone else within his leadership team, but important enough to the school committee that we want to make sure that gets assigned. So I would like us to spend the time that we need. So if we block out six to 10 with a professional facilitator, we should be able to accomplish quite a lot and hopefully finish a little bit earlier.
Do you need a motion? No.
It'll be posted as required by law, but it'll be in a different location, it'll be informal and very casual. So bring your.
Don't grease your slippers.
Heavy wool socks, a little chilly in the building.
All right, the next item on the agenda, we're running a few minutes behind, but that's not too bad, is the update on school security.
Thank you. This is a brief update, really. I've obviously been in contact with Chief O'Leary, I talked to him even this afternoon. And the radios are on order because we've been working through the police department. I think that that makes sense and that'll be, as I mentioned at the last meeting, state of the art. The Metrolec work is actually moving back on schedule. They've actually, we, Paul Jackson and I met with Chief O'Leary and two representatives from Metrolec and they showed us a model of what they've done with another high school in the area and very, very extensive work that they're going to be able to do. They've already visited Foxborough High School to get this thing moving and they know they've met with the administrative team and we'll be getting a timeline in the next few days. So I'm very pleased that they've responded as well as they have. We are in contact with Connect Ed and I think our training schedule, we've looked at an October 1 finish for this. I think that's very doable. I know that Paul has been in conversation with the person who was taking the lead from the Connect Ed side on this and, you know, we'll know more as we move through the next week or two. I also, they also sent us some information. What I'd like to do, along with that first October meeting, is do a presentation on what Connect Ed looks like, so that the public will know. And if there's any more on Metrolec and we maybe might be able to have someone available that could come and talk a little bit about some more extensive work that they're offering. But I think all of these things are in motion, which I'm very pleased about. And one of the other areas that I know some of the committee knows, but maybe not all, is that Debbie Spinelli really worked diligently in Stoughton on their safety plans. And so we've already had conversations about that being a task for her as she begins, just to review, because she has a really good working knowledge of how all of that looks. So that'll be one of the things. We'll be getting her the plans that we have in place now and she can start to review them, so that when she gets on board, we'll be ready to really move on.
On the Connect Ed, would you make sure that those of us that no longer have children in the school system may not be in the database? And if there is an emergency, it would be nice to notify the school committee as well.
Yeah, right.
So make sure.
Exactly.
Really?
Yes. And would, because you may be so busy you don't have time at all, so that would work.
Making you in the chain of command, Larry, is a very good thing. I won't get on those emergency calls.
I did have, as the board requested after the last meeting, or suggested at the last meeting, I had a conversation with the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. First of all, he wanted to express his sincere appreciation for the effort to work together as a community and the idea of buying the radios, which will help the schools out occasionally but help the town out on a regular basis. And so us providing the radios and allowing the fire department, the police department, other people within town to be able to use those as necessary is a great assist to the entire community. He wanted the entire school committee to know that the board really appreciates that. And subsequently, the board did meet to discuss the Connect Ed for the town side and they did communicate to us in writing that the selectmen wholeheartedly endorse it and will support the funding for year two. So we'll provide the funding for year one out of one of the revolving accounts, so the entire community will have this emergency response system, both on the school side and the town side. And this way here, the town side will have a whole year to plan the ongoing costs. As I've said to the folks before, as an example, when we, when the community provided $50,000 for the new lights at the high school, we had $130,000 or so at the time in athletic revolving account and could have used that for the lights. So I don't feel bad offering the community back $17,000 so that we can get it up, because if in fact there's an emergency, there's some kind of a spill or some kind of a problem that impacts the high school and therefore the high school had to be evacuated along with the neighborhood, we'd want parents to know. And so by being able to work together, we're able to do the things that the community absolutely needs and wants. And I just wanted to make sure that the selectmen would endorse it in year two and beyond. They'd now committed to us in writing that they would and so we can go forward with the purchase orders and go forward with connecting that and make sure that the town has a full-scale emergency response program. Comments from anybody in the committee on the update on school security? Katie? Martha? Beverly?
Good.
Kate? Okay. Under other matters, let's start with you, Chris. Do you have anything under other matters?
I do, actually. I, in my conversation with Chief In my conversation with Chief O'Leary this afternoon, he has just heard that through Mothers Against Drunk Driving, a grant, and some other funding through some other smaller grants, we're going to be offering an online alcohol education program for our ninth graders this year. So he's been working with Kevin Murphy, Director of Health and Physical Education and Wellness, and he was very pleased to be able to relay that information to us. So what I thought we would do at a future meeting, once this is up and running, we will have a presentation about that as well. I think that, again, you know, the focus on, on an issue that I know this committee holds near and dear to them, and we all do, about substance abuse, particularly alcohol, and having all of our ninth graders go through this online training, I think will be beneficial. So having it sponsored by Mothers Against Drunk Driving, I think is very, very good.
And in with that, Chris, I think each of the committee members was sent an email from one of our concerned citizens on a program called Join Together in a Study that was done across the United States on drug and alcohol, and they had some good recommendations. And I was wondering if you would put that up on our website?
Sure.
So that not only do we have it on our parent website, that we're focusing on getting parents engaged in this, but people that come to our website, to have it up on our Foxborough school website, I think is helpful, both on our master website, but also some of the sub-websites. So that people have access to this information. There's some very good information in there, and I think we ought to disperse the information as widely as we can. It does talk about the importance of the schools, but more, but just as important is the parents' involvement. And so there's only so much the schools can do, I think. I hope the committee would agree, in the last 12 months, we've devoted a lot of time and a lot of effort to this. We've provided school resources, but we're now in the process of really reaching out to the community to get the parent involvement and the family involvement, and really that's a lot of what this is all about. So if you get that up, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
What else do you have, Chris?
That's it.
Mr. Jackson, do you have anything you want to bring up?
Only that the 16 AEDs are to be delivered tomorrow morning at 10:30.
Okay.
So you asked earlier.
All right. Katie, do you have anything on the other matters? Martha?
I noticed one thing behind the superintendent's office, and I meant to call Paul or Mike or somebody. Didn't, weren't we talking about trying to fix the area right behind the superintendent's office?
Yeah.
I noticed the other day, when I was up there, that it's cracking and before somebody lands in the Little League field, do we have a timeline to fix that? I'm kind of afraid of somebody plowing that and what, there's a nice new dip there, I noticed.
Same company, sorry.
So somebody's going to land in the Little League field.
Same company that did the granite curving at the high school and the paving will be executing the repair, but they've ordered some special granite that is, and I don't know whether to tell you, it's this high or it's this high.
Okay.
But it's some special granite that's special order that will go in to act as a retaining wall.
Oh, good.
And they need that to build that edge, and I've had several conversations with Mike about it, and every time I ask him...
It looks like all of a sudden, it's really breaking down.
Yeah. Well, and we're lucky we haven't any water because the water's been doing a job in that bank.
It undermined it terribly down. I just don't want to send a bad message to the town.
No, Mike was going to check with them again because we were talking about it.
I mean, this is...
We've approved the funding, so it's ASAP.
It was part of the cabinet.
I thought it was our...
I would imagine, given the depth of what needed to be done, and now with the depth of the new hole, you're talking granite probably up here to rebuild that.
No, I was impressed when I drove. I was like, wow, how did that happen?
Oh, it's been coming from...
Well, it's been coming, but all of a sudden, it's, it's bad.
It's the hole in the dam.
I considered going the other way, but I noticed the arrow went the other direction.
It's a pretty big one-way sign.
Yeah, it is. I didn't think it would look good if I went the wrong way, so I went out.
Anything else, Martha? No. Keith?
Just, I know I mentioned it last time, but we are having a meeting with the Partnership for Drug-Free Foxborough. It's this Thursday, the 13th, 7:00 at the Media Center. Log on to our website. Larry, I'd love to get a copy of that. They'd also put it on there or link it to the Foxborough. And we'd like to get as many parents as involved as we can. Dr. Marnes, I'll follow up with you. We're talking, this group is talking about that follow-up forum training sometime before Thanksgiving, and we've discussed a couple of possible people we want to share with the schools and the rest of the towns.
What time, Kate?
7:00. Media's over here.
Wendy, do you have an electronic copy that you can send to Kate as well? Paul's going to make some hard copies, yes?
No, don't, but I can get one.
Okay.
An PDF or whatever.
All right. Excellent.
Well, you know, if it's on the website, we can check with you and just put a link on ours to the Foxborough website.
Right.
Because the resource guide that we had from the March training, I believe, is on, still on our website, and there's a link, rather than redo it, there's a link to our website.
Anything else, Kate? Beverly?
Yes, I actually have two things that will require a vote. One is, it's come to my attention, we have scheduled, a scheduled meeting on April 21 for a school committee meeting. That happens to be a holiday, the Monday of April vacation, and I recommend that we move it to Monday, April 28. And that still leaves us, because of the way our voting day and town meeting, that still leaves three weeks before our next meeting on the 19th. But that would require a formal vote to change that from the 21st to the 28th.
Usually we don't have meetings during school vacation.
Right, but I, we, because it's, you know, published, we need to...
So is that a motion, Beverly?
I have a motion to change the date.
She made a motion. You'll second it, then?
Yep.
Okay, to change the date from 4/21 to 4/28.
28.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed? Motion carries five seconds.
And then we can post that...
Onto the website.
Onto the website so people can plan on that. Another one is Irene Titmus, who is so active in the Spanish exchange, came to me on the opening day of school. She's given me this information. I think we can act on it tonight, but she is willing to come and make a presentation to us if we would request. And it is that due to expansions of the school in Spain, in Chilevea, the Valencia part of our Spanish exchange will not be able to come this fall. They would like to request to come next fall. However, so that we will not lose the momentum in the importance of the language and cultural exchange, she hopes that we're going to let sanction them, you know, our Foxborough students going anyway in February so that this year it will be a one-way exchange. But she, she'll come and present more reasons why. I feel it's very valuable that we can not to lose the momentum and enthusiasm for language learning. Do we do that?
Usually they have to come before the committee anyways in order for us to approve.
But we had already, we'd already moved it, but because there is a change, she wants to make sure we're aware of it. This year it will be a one-way exchange, but she would like our...
Why don't you ask her to submit a letter to us that summarizes the change? And if the committee is comfortable that it answers their questions, we don't have to bother her to come out in the evening. We can approve it quickly. If it turns out the committee has still has questions, we can ask her to join us.
Well, that's an extra step, an extra step of work for her. Do we really feel we need that, to ask her to do that?
Well, I think she needs to outline the fact that they're not coming, but we're still going.
So you want it form, in a formal...
Yeah, just to send it in a form letter, just so that we're aware that we're not expecting people coming.
Be aware that this year, because of...
Because of expansion.
This is what we, this is what we're doing.
Okay. I will get back to you.
And at the end of the day, Chris and Earl will talk, probably agree, and the recommendation to us will be just to agree the amendment. I hate to see her have to come and...
I know, but she wanted me to make you aware of it as soon as possible.
Maybe this year we'll experiment and they'll go to France and Spain like many of the other high schools do.
Oh, we...
One for one. No, I know, we've talked about that before. Many schools will take, instead of one week, they go two weeks, and they take the French and the Spanish, and they go, they actually go two stops. It's just, it's wonderful.
But we have a French exchange.
Oh, I know, I know. I just keep bringing it up, Bev. Just want to get that plug in there.
Why do you want to, why do you want to send the Spanish students to France and the French students to Spain?
Because we're global. Did you know we're global? And that's how many schools now do it, to give that...
We have a wonderful program. I just thought I'd put a little plug.
It sounds, though, Beverly, the committee is very supportive of trying to support the change that's necessary. So I think if she would submit it, Chris can look at it, even if it's a agreement.
Okay. And it just needs to be brief.
Just brief.
One or two lines.
Fine.
Anything else, Beverly?
I just want to mention that we have a very appreciative and excited new assistant superintendent who is sending thank you notes for the opportunity to be able to serve once again as part of the administrative team in Foxborough. And then I received another one that I'd like, it's just a short one. Could I read it to the members of the school committee? It was written on August 31, 2007, to the members of the Foxborough School Committee. "Thank you," underlined, "for doing such an excellent, underlined job in bringing in the current superintendent and assistant superintendent. As a parent, substitute teacher, and townie, I am excited about the turn of events in our district. You alone know of all the time, energy, and effort that you each put into what is often a thankless job. A year ago, I was feeling frustrated and helpless with what was happening in our school system. Thank you for your willingness to serve and for the many hours and sleepless nights you've had in order to improve the Foxborough public schools. You've worked hard and speaking for many of Foxborough's parents and children. We appreciate it. Sincerely, Valerie Scott." And just, I have had another push from the chair of Henry Lucas, Academic Decathlon, who is hopeful that we will have an academic decathlon team someday, and just wondered if we've had anybody aboard who wanted to try to get one up and running for this year. So I will respond that I have not heard any, but we are working on it.
Beverly, I think it's so important for us to drive the energy around that program as we do football, or music, or basketball, that I would even be willing to endorse a stipend for a teacher or teachers that would like to take responsibility for getting that up and running.
There is, there is a meeting on Wednesday, the 26th, if anybody steps forward between now and then.
What would be a...
In the afternoon.
Would the committee agree to a stipend to get this off the ground?
Oh, absolutely.
What kind of a stipend do you think would be reasonable?
I think they're pretty well set. We have a list of stipends, and we have a range.
Let me just look at the, at the stipends and kind of something, I'm sure there's something analogous to it in the contract.
Okay. Because we want to get this jump started, we should treat it like we treat any other extracurricular activity, and we ought to reimburse the leader of the school. Does that, is that it, Beverly?
Well, just another idea along with the technological trends that are happening. In Oklahoma, there's a middle school now that gives students web-based lockers. They're called virtual lockers. For the cost of $1 per user per year, the school will give students 100 megabytes of online storage so kids can have a place to keep their multimedia projects. The school worked with California-based company, School Web Lockers, so that it didn't tie up the servers. During its test phase, the school said it all but eliminated the need for flash drives and other memory-holding devices while beefing up the school web security. So this is just an idea of where...
Say that to Mr. Borlatti.
I'll give this to Paul. I thought that the DVD, Did You Know, was so good. We played it in...
July.
July, when everybody was, many people were in vacation mode or actually on vacation. Do we think it is, now that people are school-focused again, do we think for just a few minutes we, at our next meeting, to get people back on just that one?
Could we put it, like streaming video, cable would have it?
Is it on cable there?
Cable has it. We have it.
Okay, so could we get it on our news portal? I'm not sure of the step, but to do...
We could certainly do that. Put it on our news portal.
Do you think it would be, it's so brief, but I think so potent, I would love to have it...
We could show it the next, why not?
It's just a very few minutes.
I wouldn't be opposed, obviously.
Six minutes.
We could show it again. I think people might be tuning in because it's the beginning of the school year.
But this is what I mean. I think we are, I think people are fall-focused, people are back at school.
That's a good idea. Sure.
And I don't want to make the meeting too long, but something, I want to let you, let us all know and be aware of what Foxborough High School competition is out there. I had the opportunity to tour a renovated middle school, and this middle school is only seventh and eighth grade. And they did this, they got the grant money before it was cut off for our new distribution. In this middle school, it is entirely wireless. All of the students have laptops. Now, the laptop grant that was given to Maine, they let the students take all the laptops home, and it did not work. These are signed out every morning, signed back in every afternoon. But every student in classrooms have laptops. The teachers go into their classroom. Every teacher has a PowerPoint presentation. You can see it visually, you can hear it every day. Their math, no. Their science and their social studies texts are all online. They can be projected there so that you are visually seeing it as well as hearing it. The heavy textbooks go home at the beginning of the year and stay there, and all this is virtually learned in schools during the year. This is a middle school. So we, our high school is in competition with those prepared middle school students going to their high school.
Where was the school located?
This is in Marblehead, but they were under that, they, I don't know if they could get all that right now, but they were under that grant before they cut off the, you know...
The renovation.
The renovation. And you mentioned Chinese online. There was a man who's come back to the States for five years. He was superintendent in the American School in Beijing.
Paul Dulac.
Yes.
Good friend of mine.
Paul Dulac is very concerned about all of our high school seniors from this year on graduating, A, being able to hold jobs if they do not know Chinese, or B, perhaps being able to secure a job. He was superintendent at the American School in Beijing for five years and is aware, he's bringing a lot of global awareness to the North Shore now. So I think this idea, I'll sign up for that online Chinese class, but...
Is there any way to get someone like him to come and send something?
Sure. Absolutely. Sure.
That could be.
Yeah.
I think it's...
Have to put it out there. Absolutely.
Well, Marblehead High School, I just had my 50th class reunion for Marblehead High School. And it was my old high school that is now the, this renovated...
I don't believe 50. It's impossible. You know what?
It was the good song there.
We will, we will not put another T-line in because technology's changed. At some point, it's not out of the realm, but I don't think it's going to happen next year or...
No, but I do think...
Keep talking about it. We have a fantastic technical team. You don't know what they might be able to do.
But this is, I mean, it ties right in, it ties right in with this Did You Know video. Oh, and between 2:30 and 4:00 with all of these laptops, they open the Media Center because one of the- and we need to become aware, and Martha keeps mentioning, we need to become aware of what is being called the digital divide. There are people who simply do not have access to updated computers. And this is the- I mean, if this is the way they're teaching in the middle school, and middle schools across the country now. So between 2:30 and 4:00, their Media Center is open with these laptops so that the people and others, the children in the community and some of the elementaries, if they can come in and have access to that. And the principal, who is giving us the tour, said it also helps with the loneliness factor. And I said, the loneliness factor? And she said, yes. Many young people go home to empty houses, so they come here and they do their homework here so that they aren't alone. She said, in Marblehead right now, 60% of the families have two parents working. So there are no people- no one at home for these young people to go to. And I know there are many-
It's a nice offering.
There are many, many families in Foxborough who have both parents working also. So I think the more I visit schools and the more ideas, see how they're handling all these situations, I think if we share, we all do that, we can provide the best for our students.
Absolutely.
I think I'm done.
Okay.